I'll call the meeting orders if we may have microphones. If you will, stand for the opening right.
Father, we thank you for this day and we hope that you give us some guidance and patience through this budget process. We ask that you be with people that have been involved with the floods and hope that their property and their families are all well. We ask this in your name.
Join with me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only item on our business meeting this morning is discuss, approve, or disapprove amendment to the Commercial Electricity Service Agreement for 111 North Brown Building, Brown Street Building, giving authorization of Judge Walter Arlong Jr. to sign authored by Lilana Caspik. Lilana, you want to explain to us what this is and what we need to do and what we're competing ourselves to?
At the last meeting, the court authorized turning all the utilities on at that building. Our electricity provider is through a contract with Direct Energy through the bid with Texas Association of School Boards, or TASB. This is just authorizing adding that meter to our account to provide service.
It was not included before?
No, sir, because we did not own it and therefore we did not have it with electricity.
The building we didn't own?
Correct.
I said we didn't own.
Correct.
To use electricity or?
And our current contract goes through May of 2017.
Will this contract be including it until long at the same time period?
Correct. It adds it to our existing contract.
And is that all there is too?
That's it. Your signature, I fax it off, they sign it, and send it back and we file it.
I'll make motion agree. Accept this as written?
Second. Is there discussion on the motion? There's been a motion out of second to accept this as it is presented at this meeting. Any comment from any of the court? No questions? All righty, all in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign? All voted for, motion carried. That's the only action item for the meeting today and so we would have to close the meeting with that action. And we will then convene into a budget workshop meeting with one item. Actually, it's more than one item, but it's discussed the departmental budget proposals and we will be discussing, as far as I'm aware, of five budget departments. And they are the auditor, the emergency management, treasurer, library, and the sheriff's office. We'll start, and of course, there won't be any action taken on any of this, this is a workshop. So with that said, the budget workshop is convened and we'll discuss the departmental budget proposals, starting with the auditor's office.
I have given each of y'all a notebook of copies of all the requests that have been received. These are just departmental requests. I'm still asking the county judge and veteran service officers. After we get through all of these through the rest of this month, then we will go into the generalized budgets, non-departmental, capital outlay, things such as that. But these are going to be presentations by each department to support their requests that they provided in writing. I put myself at the top of the list because I figured I'd take the hits first. In my request, you will notice that I have increased office expense by $250. That's due to the added reports that must be generated, copy paper, toner ink, et cetera. My cellphone allowance remains at the same rate.
What, is your stuff in here?
It's on page 15, I'm sorry.
That's on page 15.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I already got it.
What are the pages numbered?
They are in handwriting at the very bottom.
Well, some are and some aren't.
Well, the lead page for a department is, they may have supporting information that... Yeah, you're in JQ4 right now? There it is. Okay, telephone expense will remain the same. The cellphone, I am reducing to $780. This current year, it's at $1,200 based on the actual charges that can be reduced. Mileage is remaining the same. Conference, I am reducing by requesting a reduction of $500 rather than $4,000 annual. Some of the conferences' locations have changed, so they won't involve travel mileage, so that's a reduction. The bond remains the same, the association dues remain the same. Furnishings, I've requested $500. We have had some issues with the guest chairs in all three of my offices, so I'm proposing to replace mine, move mine to the first assistant, the first assistants to the second assistants, as well as acquiring a new guest chair for myself. I don't know how many of y'all are aware that Gina Curry, my second assistant, has resigned. Her husband was a boardman at TDCJ in Bevill and he is retiring, so they are moving back to East Texas. Her last day is the third. I'm in the process of interviewing for that replacement. It has been recommended by the mediator that has been meeting with, by and myself, that I should request an additional staff member. I have not had the opportunity to discuss that with the district judges yet, but that is a possibility that that might be in addition.
Where would you know?
I think we have a juvenile board meeting next Thursday where they vote, should be present, so I'm hoping to be able to talk to them after that.
If you got another person, where would you give an idea where you might put it?
Well, that's going to be a whole scenario within our building. We'll have to do some adjustments, possibly reallocate some space or something like that. But I didn't figure we needed to cross that bridge yet until we knew that there was going to be an additional body.
After you mentioned that it might be available or that they might come around, is this something you need, maybe you need another person?
It would be beneficial. You've been in my office.
Beneficial because of the lack of space or?
The workload. The auditor's office tends to be the catch-all for everything within the county. I'm the Lucy of Charlie Brown.
This is not a poke at you because I probably ask the same thing of all the departments, that if you have an absenteeism problem, any of your health, are they consistently there?
Gina has been excellent. Michelle has been with the county, she's in her 21st year.
Okay, so everybody's working.
With this changeover, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll probably have some extra time that's going to have to be devoted with training and that kind of stuff.
If you will, you went over before my brain engaged the items in your budget that were changing. If you'll go over those again.
Okay, office expense currently is $2,500. I requested an increase to $2,750. Cellphone is a reduction. Current budget has $1,200 and based on the billings, I've reduced that to $780. Conference expense, I reduced from $4,000 to $3,500. And then I have the addition of $500 for furnishings, for the new chairs. The overall requested budget is a reduction of $170, not counting salary fringe, just operating expenses.
Another question about cellphones. Would you be asking us to decrease employees' cellphones?
Only certain employees have county-provided cellphones, others have $1,200 worth of their cellphones to compensate for that.
Again, not a poke at you, a poke at everybody, but I realize these offices have, excuse me, associations have built up these continuing education units that everybody has to have. That's a full employment, I agree, bureaucrats, but anyway. I personally have concerns about the amount of money that the county is spending in little pieces on all of these conferences. Places, the entities that schedule them seem to schedule them at the most expensive hotels they can. And I know because they get the meeting room free if they block so many rooms and this, that, and the other. But I glanced at yours and then I just flipped the next one, which happens to be Mrs. Malone's, and she's got $3,000. I saw in one instance $3,000 worth of conference expense. And I guess these things are necessary. This isn't a poke at your department, it's a poke at the program in general. It looks like it's become a little black hole for money in terms of, I've got to go, so... And I'm not faulting anyone for charging their mileage or the, excuse me, the things like that that go along with it. I guess I'm asking for any thought anybody has on a way of possibly reducing it a little bit, because if we take $3,000 or $3,500 across all of the employees, it becomes a pretty fair piece of change by the time you get finished.
Oh, one thing, for all the officials, we are mandated by statute for continuing education, so many hours per every term. When these conferences are booked, the associations negotiate with the hotels and we pay the state rate. It's not the off-the-block rate, so it is at reduced rates. And it is very convenient to have it all at one location where you don't have to travel then to another location for your actual classes, because then you will also have people charging their mileage from the hotel to the location of the class back to the hotel. So it's much more convenient that everything's in one location. Used to, the county auditors' actual classes were on campus at UT, but then we had off-site hotel blocks. And that became very chaotic in the lovely town of Austin. And so that's why our association has gone to having it all on one site.
Plus, there's no bar on campus.
Who has to talk alcohol when we're talking?
Okay, well, it's just a thought.
Edit that joke.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the court?
My understanding with budget workshops this year is that everyone will make their presentation. What they present should be their final request, with exception of salaries, et cetera. And then at that time, it will be court moving numbers, adding numbers. We're not going to have multiple presentations by the same department. Like, after I hear all these today, I can't come back, or I shouldn't want to come back on Monday and say, "Woo, I need!"
It just prolongs everything.
Correct, correct.
You may have said this, I like Judge Long was hunting for the paper initially. Are you within your current year's budget? Do you have a surplus or are you running close?
I have 30% of my budget remaining.
Okay, we have three months left, so pretty much.
Yes.
Okay, if you, it's recommended that you get a new employee that will be added to this budget, is that correct?
Correct. There is nothing in my request for salaries and fringe because we don't know this.
If you do have a new employee, they will require training, so your conference expense may be, or the training may increase.
If they have to have any outside training, I'll have to either do an additions if I get the new employee. I feel like Michelle and I will be able to train on the packets that we utilize.
So they don't need, don't continue with the orders there?
No, the assistants do not.
Not getting trained?
Okay. How long have you been in your position?
I am completing my 15th year.
And so it would not be unthinkable that you could train whoever you happen to need?
Yes, sir.
You've had 15 years to learn the job, then?
It changes daily, yes.
It does, but it also stays the same day, which is?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Lilana, with the problems we've had with this financial computer software, do you need to build any type of funding in there for additional training or tech support or... Because I don't think we're ever going to get the bug value thing.
Well, the tech support, it will be coming out of the IT department or an IT budget as all softwares have their annual maintenance and support. Those fees will be built in to that. I don't think I need to budget additional dollars for specialized training, onsite training or anything like that.
And your computers are all, you don't have enough for computers?
They're relatively new. I do have in our current budget, which is through IT, a laptop so that I can access the system remotely, so I can bring it in here. And if y'all have a question, I can, you know, pull up a bill or something right away. I have not acquired that in this year, but I'm planning on doing that within the current year budget.
Any other questions or comments from the court? We're not going to have multiple appearances by different people that want to equal somebody else, so you might ought to be sure that you ask whatever questions you have on the first time around. There may not be a second time for all or any of them. Now, I'm not threatening anybody or anything, but I just want you to be aware that we're not going to beat this thing to death multiple times or going over the same thing. So that said, any other comments or questions or anything from the court? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The second party for us to hear from on this will be the emergency management person people. Remember, who happens to be my secretary at this particular time, but she was the emergency management person at the time this was started, and she knows more about it probably than anybody else, so...
That department's budget request is page 37.
I think in the interest of some developments with the emergency management, that the emergency management budget should be presented with the county judge's budget. We should hold off until then.
With what?
With the county judge's budget.
And that's all right with me, of course, or she would be doing it.
Counsel, I was looking at the page, but what, I'm sorry.
37? Did you say 37?
Yes.
37, I'm sorry.
Well, if I'm 37, the way these are numbered...
It's close to 30. I'll move back.
30.
It's way back.
And I'll share a little bit about what happened. We've received funding for Homeland Security grant.
Wait a second.
Okay.
I've got two 37 page numbers.
That's because in the current year budget, special projects and 911 addressing and emergency management.
Wait a minute, I've got three.
The first, the first one is emergency management. The second two are special projects and 911 addressing. They were all three combined in an operational budget this year. The suggestion has been that they be split out, but because of how they were in this current year, that's how I put them in order here.
Okay, the second two are?
Special projects and 911 addressing.
A, B, and C.
And the left one is what again? That's it.
The second two are a combination of 911 addressing, special projects, and the county permitting agent. They're titled at the top of the page.
I say, she wants a vehicle. She wants to spend about $35,000 on a vehicle and up, lights, cover, radio. This is ridiculous. We have a co-compliance officer. This should be given to co-compliance if she has a full-time job as secretary. We have this already. We're looking at redundancy. This is ridiculous. I know we'll discuss it later, but I just looked down through it.
Are you looking at what page?
First page, 37.
First page, 37.
Well, the emergency manager, they've responded to stuff. They're going in their personal vehicles and half the time, they have a hard time getting into the location because nobody recognizes who they are. Now, the emergency manager works for the county judge and is appointed by the county judge. And if you look in the state statute, it explains all that.
Shelby, it's a make-work job.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It's a statutory job.
You don't have to have one. We happen to have one.
We don't have to have one.
You show me where it says in the statute that we are required to have an emergency management coordinator.
418.101 of the emergency manager statute shows, tells you that.
It tells you that every, the elected, it goes to political subdivisions and jurisdictions and it just explains that. The county judge is the emergency manager for the county. However, he has the obligation to appoint an emergency manager coordinator, who by the way, the judge during a time of a disaster or any type of, any type of incident, has powers of the governor to request everything except for the military forces.
Okay, well...
You want to read the book?
I'll, I'll accept it.
Have you read 418.101? And what does it say?
What'd you read? Don't attack me.
Well, you're looking laughing at me.
Yeah, I can laugh, that's my right. I was going to say, this is ridiculous for a, anyway. We ain't voting on it, so it doesn't matter, but you won't get me voted for, period.
There have been some changes to the emergency management, to the emergency management that will change the budget. We received $72,000 in grant funds, notification that those funds have been awarded to us pending our certification and credentialing. If you go out and attempt to hire somebody else to do it and do all the training, you will not meet the timeline to receive that grant. I agree that sometimes, you know, combining two jobs is appropriate, but what you're discussing are, is a job that's responsive to the sheriff, one elected official, and a job that's responsive to the judge, another elected official. And those two elected officials have to agree, and that's fine, I mean, if they agree with that. But at this point in time, the grant funds are time-sensitive and we will lose those opportunities if we don't make some changes. It has been requested by Commissioner Dubnick and approved by Judge Long. I was going to say your full name, Walter Arlong.
That's what I...
That I would continue as Judge Long's assistant and do the grant programming so we don't lose those opportunities on a part-time basis as it was budgeted in 2013, 2014. And that's why I'm requesting at this time that we wait to discuss, because this budget is not any good. We can argue over it, but it's not any good. That's why I've requested that we wait and present the emergency management coordinator with the judge's budget, if that's okay.
I have no issue with you serving in both positions, don't misunderstand that. I just think that we need to rethink some of the requests on here, but if you want to present it at that time in a different form, I think that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you get a salary as the emergency management coordinator and as Judge Walter Arlong?
It would be a part-time salary for the same part-time fee that it was to hire someone who had a full-time job to respond to incidents on a part-time basis prior to the job becoming a full-time job.
A lot of quote, quick.
It would be impossible for me to do emergency management and be Judge Long's assistant in an eight-hour day. But because we have the opportunities and will lose them if we don't work on them, I have agreed to manage those funds on a part-time basis.
There is a side benefit that Suzanne is not bringing up, and as much as I disagree with the program, last year the county spent, or this year spent, a substantial amount of money getting her certified in these things for whatever certification it was.
That's not the truth. The county didn't spend a tremendous amount of money. I spent my own money to finish my COSHO.
Okay.
And that was my own money, and that was about $6,000. And the NIM's coursework is free to, to emergency management professionals through the FEMA, through the Department of Homeland Security.
Okay, I stand corrected. I'll check into it.
The other things that were spent for credentialing were for the Texas Emergency Management Conference, which is a nominal fee of $175. This year, I volunteered at the conference on my own time to, so that the county could recruit that money and ask.
I intentionally asked her to continue to administer or do whatever you want to call it, her part of this funding, for the simple reason that she's familiar with it because she's worked on it for the last year. And it is going to be more successful, which is already shown with the result, than anybody else would be trying to come in and start the same program. And this is not going to be a permanent thing, that she does it every year, but she moved into my administrative assistance program here. And I thought that for the maximum benefit, we should keep her working on this same thing. And she doesn't have time to take care of the job here and to work full-time on the other project. If anybody has any kind of... If anybody has any kind of real problem with this, well, you need to speak up, you need to talk to me, you need to talk to the courts. Because at this point, this is what we're gonna do this year. If anybody can show me where it's better to do it differently and will be more financially attractive to the whole county to do it some other way, I would be certainly willing to lis, to listen. Nobody has talked to me about it at all. And if you do have a problem, you need to talk. That's one of the reasons we're here today.
Judge, if I can offer, in the past, we have had some positions that were combined. For instance, several years ago, the county judge's administrative assistant secretary also used to serve as the VSO. When we budgeted those years, we budgeted that as a combined position, county judge's secretary slash VSO. So therefore, the rate of pay was different, but it was not both individual salaries. There was not necessarily an average of the salaries, but that would be my suggestion because there may come events that happen during eight to five hours that require Susanna to go out on site as the EMC. And so therefore, if she's getting paid her full eight hours to be the administrative assistant, but yet she's not here because she's responding to EMC, I know there's already been a lot of rumblings about double dipping, and that would be the way to avoid it, would be to actually budget for a combined position and do some type of median salary between the positions. Adjust the hourly pay rate because it would be covering two positions rather than just one.
I understand that.
And that's what I was, that's the direction I was headed in my question. You know, because there, like she says about the double dipping, I have nothing against you, Susanna, but you know, what she just said, I agree with.
But you're talking about for the next FY, right?
Correct.
And, and this one, two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, it would remain the salary of secretary and the salary of the full-time?
Well, I don't see.
Or do we change it now?
I think that, in my opinion, that it's gonna have to be an agenda item to combine the positions for the remainder of this fiscal year, adjust the pay rate. Then we will do a line item move from the EMC salary line item into the county judge's administrative assistant.
So that position will have a slash, it'll be?
Correct. That's my suggestion.
And that's the way to keep her from the double dipping.
Any other comments, questions?
Two thousand seventeen, the plans have to be redone?
Yes, sir.
And you need to start that this year or next year?
Yes, the process is already started.
By the way, there's an emergency operation plan, basic plan with twenty-six annexes? It has to be redone and, and every five years, then submitted to the state for approval. And this affects everybody's homeland security funding.
I will comment that since we have the grant and Susanna started, I think she needs to continue working on it so we don't jeopardize that, giving that money. We also need to start looking around, see if we can find someone who is willing to take the, the emergency management job either as a part-time or as a full-time, whatever, whoever we can find. We need to look for someone to do that job. But I don't believe she wants to have both jobs continued. I don't know whether that's correct or not, is it?
If you find someone to work full-time in another entity and then also do the emergency management, they're not here.
So, you know, we need to, we need to investigate, see what?
I'm here.
Who we can get to do this. She needs to continue to do it right now, not to jeopardize the grant.
Susanna, what is the grant written for? Is it for equipment purchases? Is it to supplement salary? Is it to, what are the?
It's for equipment purposes. It's specifically to build out that EOC trailer. And at the time that we had that large incident out on County Road three forty-three, to have a working vessel for people to be able to work, for cantining, and then also to have appropriate radio systems and so forth inside of it would have been beneficial. Part of the thing, part of what was discussed in a, I don't wanna say it was an after-action because it was more like a hot wash, was that we had some difficulties getting all parties involved together, because everybody was kind of in their own, set up an incident command there with that trailer. At this point in time, it's not, it needs to be updated. It needs to be?
I just wanted everyone to be aware of what the grant funds were available.
Is it a hundred thousand dollars or?
It's seventy-two thousand dollars. I apologize. When I first heard it, I thought, oh, because what was presented to Commissioner's court was up to a hundred thousand dollars. But we did get the full amount of funding that we requested.
Will it take all of that to prepare the trailer you're speaking of?
That's what the monies were requested for.
The answer is yes.
If not, then we don't. And I'm guessing this is on a reimbursement basis that we?
No, ma'am.
Don't press the money?
That's why it's not. The EMPG grant program is a reimbursement basis. It's a fifty percent reimbursement based on your performance. And that means training and exercise, planning, all of the things that are done within the county with all of the different jurisdictions, and then the, the state designates money through the federal government to the, to the county, basically, for having their plans and for exercising their plan. And that is a fifty percent buyback of anything that is purchased for the purpose of emergency management.
If it boils down to the fact that we have to have this vehicle, I'm going to make the, one of the pickups that presently is assigned permitting, which is fairly new available. We have two vehicles. We can live without one of them. So if it comes to that, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, if it comes to that, I would propose that you think about using one of these and upgrading it to a point where you can use it rather than spending any money on a vehicle.
I believe that that's fair. And the vehicle was a discussion that was discussed last year, and basically, other people who had done the job, who were appearing at incident sites in their personal vehicles, had an understanding of the liability that that would incur, both to the county and to the county, to them personally and to the county. I mean, okay, you're showing up to a, to an incident site where the general public is not allowed to be in, and you, your vehicle is, number one, it's parked there, it's not , it's not usable to, to assist in, in traffic correction or anything, it's just sitting there. And so it, it just, it makes sense to have something that is counted on rather than have someone either at different hours of the night or at times outside of the eight to five, driving around in their personal vehicle.
Well, what, what comes to mind is the trailer also. I had forgotten about the trailer. So if you got a trailer and you don't have a vehicle, as unfortunate as it is, of course, Sheriff's Department does have substantial vehicles and they are usually available on a twenty-four hour basis. But if it, if it becomes court's decision, then as a fallback, like I say, I'd like to find something in the fleet already rather than go out and buy something brand-new.
Other comments, questions?
That has been kept up with the EMPG grant, oh, man, it'll be fifty percent.
On a vehicle?
Yes.
Any other thing that needs to be brought up, Susanna? Think you've got it all covered.
If I said yes, why didn't you strive right in the middle of this room? There's always something to let you know you're not wrong.
Well, let's hope it is somebody that deserves it, rather than a non-deserving person.
Is the county mitigation plan coming up for renewal also?
The, the county mitigation plan is something that's been worked on along with the region. That's one of the regional projects. And it's also something that's recommended in all of the productivity that we have going on with oil and gas, is that we work on mitigation plans with our regional partners.
But FEMA's plan, at one time, they weren't gonna let a region be allowed, they were gonna do maybe one or two counties?
Yes, yes. And our sister county that looks the most like us is Atascosa County, and I have been in ongoing contact with their EMC.
Is that gonna be a cost that we're gonna have to share? Because it's gonna, not gonna be achieved of it.
That's not something that we've discussed on past year.
Was it, it'll be, it has to be completed by two thousand seventeen or started, or it starts?
The state's recommendation for mitigation planning has not been posted yet.
Because that's all gonna be done by probably a consultant of some sort? Unless they, unless ACOG can provide somebody to, to do all that, it is the last, huh?
Possibly. We, and, and we put in the budget of eighteen hundred dollars for consulting fees if we, if we need that within the next year.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for answering, Director. We appreciate it.
Anything else you care to say about this?
No, I've said more than I care to say.
Well, I'll have to say that I encouraged her to keep her hands on this particular project because we had nobody else that was, that was really engaged in, in seeing to it or, or seeing what would happen there. She came to work for me, and I felt like she could do that on a part-time basis and take care of her job as, as my assistant here. And I still feel like that. And if, and if we're gonna do the thing properly, it needs somebody taking care of it that knows what they're doing. And I'm not sure there is anybody else at this point. But if, if anybody thinks they're capable of it, I'd be welcome, welcome into my office and let's talk about it. I may not agree with your abilities or whatever you think you're capable of doing, but I certainly am willing to talk anytime with anybody about anything that will make us do better. And this will make us do better if we get this taken care of properly. So with that said, anybody else have a comment? I guess you're off the hot seat for a minute or two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, we're down to number three, the treasurer.
And her page is sixteen.
God, where is that?
About the middle of the book.
What I handed you was just some documentation on the requested salary. I'm not sure if salaries are being discussed today or if that's gonna be another budget workshop within itself, but that's some documentation from the salary survey people and from a, from the Duette County salary on their county treasurer. I asked the Adiscussive County Treasurer for hers, and I have not received that yet. But that's a documentation that you have in there. Also is the quote last year from ANW on the furniture. We have money in this year's budget for remodeling of the building, painting, et cetera. I would like to make Sylvia a full-time physician, and with that money, I would like to do the remodeling to move Elaine into the supply closet now, remodel the supply closet into an office, and then put Sylvia in Elaine's chair. And I, we have money, I think, in this year's budget to do that, so I wouldn't need to do the, I think, seven thousand dollars for furnishing and remodeling on that. And that seven thousand probably is a little high on the remodeling. I had Zane come in, and he said it'd probably take about three or four thousand dollars to re, to remodel that bill, that supply closet into another office, but that was him doing the work when he was with the county, so I'm not sure if that would be more or not on that. As Lwana had talked about, the mediator between herself and I, he has asked that, suggested that she have an extra person also. He suggested I have an extra person also, but my, for her mind to be a part-timer because she would be basically keeping up with the filing, et cetera. I wouldn't need her to particularly have a desk. I have a table and a small desk in my office that Sylvia uses now. That person could continue to use that. Would kinda like to look possibly at a college person to do that, that would have some flexible hours on a couple of days a week to come in for that. My telephone expense, I increased a little bit because of having to add an extra line into that office, the new office building. Travel, I have to go to Galveston next year for my conference for investment, so that's a little further travel than San Antonio from this year. I have to my conference expenses a little bit also because of the, the hotels rates. I put a thousand dollars in there for Elaine for conferences. That's in case there's something I feel like she could possibly go for one day when we have our conference in Austin, something that the assistant treasurer can learn from. A lot of the treasurers do take their assistants with them, but I don't, she can't be going from the office, both of us can't be going from the office for three or four days. And so I put that in there for her. My computer expense, my computer is good, and Elaine's is good, and we bought Sylvia a brand-new one, but I don't know. Anything could happen, and I don't know if that's something we could move to the IT department also. I think that's where all the computers are now anyways, Lwana, right?
Yes.
So that, probably something could be moved to IT. The bond is the same, the dues are the same. And the office expense, I did increase that quite a lot because of, like Lwana said, with reports with this new system. Normally, when I'm reconciling bank statements, the old system would print about a twenty-page report. Now I'm getting up to seventy-five to a hundred-page reports for just one account because it's so much more detailed on that. I am asking that we upgrade the Time Clock Plus, which is the time clock system that we use now. There is an upgrade on it. I would rather it come from the IT budget, not mine, but I do want the county to be aware of it. If you're interested, I can send you a little video of the new upgrade to it.
What was the cost of that upgrade, I told? Thought I gave that to you. I know you emailed me that video, and I don't remember what was on that.
I don't have it, sorry. I thought I had, did you? Probably, I don't know, seven thousand maybe?
Okay, and on your telephone expense, your explanation says due to adding another line, not another phone number, but the other line in the remodeled office.
Right, and I think there's a phone line in there already, but it's just, because it's another phone, I would think there would be more expense to that. And probably just to have it turned on, that kind of, or the number moved from the number that's originally in there now to my phone number.
Isn't it possible to talk to the phone company and find out what the expense will be, is it?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Why don't we do that when we're estimating costs and such things instead of, it might be this or it might be that? If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, you can.
I can do that, get a more definite number on that one, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
The question is on equipment, you said that that you would use for the remodeling of the supply room?
Yes. And we have fifty thousand dollars, I think, in this year's current budget, Lwana, does that sound right? Luana, does that sound right? Just gonna flip her papers. And we could, we could use, originally planned that for the finished painting, the building, and then we kinda started talking about moving people around, and we didn't wanna start messing with that painting if we're gonna be changing, and if you're going to give her another person in her office, maybe we can just do it all at one time, but somehow manage to get in this fiscal year that money, do that, instead of putting it in next year's budget, since it's already in this year's budget.
I'll ask you like I asked Luana, did you have any anticipation of any cost related to that new program that y'all have so much problem with?
No, no, because like she had said, the tech support is part of our monthly fee, we've always paid, or not a monthly fee, I guess on the initial amount that we paid was two years of tech support included in it, and after that, then you'll pay a monthly tech support, so. So I don't think there's any more training available to us that we haven't already taken. It's just sitting down and learning the system every day, just using the system every day and getting used to it. And like my part-timer, she wouldn't even need a computer, cause she has no reason to be on it, she won't be receiving money in, or anything like that.
So what are the benefits, explain to them upgrading the Time Clock Plus?
I think with like the comp time, it's going to be doing the comp time the way we want it to do it, where it does it at the quarter hours, instead of doing it like per minutes, it does it on the quarter hours. There's easier way for the employees to get to it, gives them more information. It just based upgrading of the system itself.
Are all these time clock things working?
Yes.
Cause I hear tell it, they're not all working.
Well, sometimes, I know, but the sheriff's department has issues with theirs, and it's because of the iPhones themselves, Time Clock Plus was not keeping up with the upgrades to be compatible with the iPhones whenever they're doing a upgrade, but it takes them a little bit of time to get to that. But we, other than, if the internet's down, no, you cannot get on it. But it makes it easier, like with payroll, because we just import that file and it fits it into everybody's hours, instead of having to manually put them in.
Pardon me for not paying attention early on, but I heard you say something about you had something, some money remaining in your budget for furnishings for this year?
Well, it's, the building itself has the fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars for remodeling. We had wanted, we redid the floors and we redid the restrooms, and then we didn't get that finished last year's budget, so this year's budget, we put in fifty thousand for the painting and whatever else needed to be done. And I would like to use that money to remodel the supply room that we have now into another office.
And that was my item that you said Zane had estimated thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, yes, and then I gave you a quote from ANW from last year on some furniture, just to get an idea on what it would cost.
But if you did it now, this current fiscal year, there is money set aside for it, as I understand?
There is money in the budget, the catch will be getting a contractor to get it done.
In that time frame?
Correct, yes. So I will most likely put that on the June thirtieth agenda to go ahead and spend that money.
Did we get, receive the written quote from the painter? Have you received that?
No, I didn't, yeah, and I guess rented it in.
And if we can get this done, this FY, that would include, you know, fifty, we'd get the furnishings, are we needing?
Yes, yes, and that would be the twenty-three hundred, I think, what it was on that, that quote that we have, yeah, twenty-five hundred, that was for the desk, for the dent, the shelving, et cetera.
So is that to equip the new office space, or is that new furnishings for all your?
For the new office space, just for her office space, yes.
I thought the painter was here this morning.
Wouldn't be a conflict.
Last year, there was discussion at the same budget type workshop that we were going to have a CFO, and it affected the treasurer's budget in relation to how many assistants, if we were gonna have a CFO. It was in the budget last year, I was just wondering if you all were gonna just do away with that idea, or where we, where we can?
I don't think there's been a decision, a final decision made on what we're gonna do with it, to be honest with you, I'm not aware of it. Does any of the commissioner's court think there has been?
There's not anything in this set of budgetary figures, Luana, for a CFO, is there?
No, sir, because there is not an existing department to present that budget request.
Any else?
Justin, I made a comment, as far as that building over there, while you're talking about their budgets, we had an emergency over there the other day, and the internet system was so poor, that when they set off the county alert system, it didn't work, because the internet connection there is so poor in that building and this building. So we had to respond the other way by going down there, but if something needs to be put in the budget, or some of the money expended in the current budget to upgrade the internet system there, it is terrible there and terrible at this building.
There was, I was there in the, Luana, in front of Sean, there was an incident in the front, the customers, tax customers got into it, and they were, they started swinging at each other, and so we had to physically dial 911, instead of being able to use the cop sync, cause our internet, again, is very slow and that's.
The reason I bring it up, it affected the emergency system and the time clock, y'all are talking about the time clock, not working right, the reason it doesn't work right, because the internet connection.
And our power technology.
And that may have something to do with that, too.
Yes.
And I understand that during that situation, shortly before that event happened, that we had had a power surge, and sometimes when that happens, you have to reboot your computer to have access back to our software system, to have access to Ncode, and have the cop sync, and to have internet access. So that may have been a reason, because we had the power surge, that the cop sync wasn't accessible also, but we definitely, as Art presented a couple of meetings ago, need to strongly consider in this next year's budget, upgrading to the fiber optic. We need to strongly consider in this year's budget.
Whether it can be out there or their own budget, but you do have a problem there, it's affecting the services there.
Not likely in this year's budget, impossible, because if we wait till October, it could be January, February before they get to us, and we really need to get that done quickly.
Robert, this, this is a hard-wired system?
Yes, sir, it's an antiquated old hard-wired system that just needs to be updated, and I think it would be, I don't think it'd be a relatively, a lot of money to do that, but they could run a cable over here and furnish this building, and also that other building also, cause it affects job performance for all the departments in this building.
I'm not sure if you were present at the meeting when Art, with Art Combe, presentation about installing fiber optic cables, and they are working with AT&amp;T right now to try and develop a plan where they aren't gonna charge the county for the actual physical lane, but will have to enter into a long-term agreement guaranteeing so much usage, et cetera.
Very good, I wasn't aware of that, I'm sorry, but it does need to be addressed.
Luana, their articles, we could start that this year, we could start that this year with funds that are in the IT budget right now?
I don't know that there is enough to, you can't break a project down, you would have to budget for it as a whole, whether it was finished in this fiscal year, or if it overlapped, we'd have to put some in that one. There's not enough in there now to do the entire project based on the cost, and what Art had indicated is it wouldn't be an upfront cost, it's gonna be spread out over several months, thirty-six months, I think was his.
All right, but Art's, Art's cost, okay, AT&amp;T would not charge that mission cost.
Correct.
We'd get the, over three hundred thousand dollars worth.
We have enough in the current budget for Art's fees.
But Art's fee would be a minimum of fifteen thousand dollars, if I remember what he said. So, but we could have that fund in.
Yes.
IT right now, well, we could initiate it right now.
Correct.
So we should talk about that.
Anything else?
Excuse me?
Just, ma'am.
Oh, you just, you, they have the papers that say how much you're upping, like the telephone expense and the travel expense, but we didn't hear what that was up.
I'm sorry, okay, the office, the office expense, three thousand, the telephone, one thousand, two hundred, travel, two thousand, my conference, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty, one thousand for Elaine, my computers, one thousand, five hundred, which would actually kind of go, throw into IT, and I don't need a new computer right now, but you never know.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Eilers, were you wanting the increase from the current budget, or what she's requesting for next year?
I, I just wanted what she was, from this line, so if you gave me, thank you.
My, my question is, well, Luana alluded to, and then you may have pointed this, if you did, pardon me for not paying attention, but how much increase is there in office expense, telephone, travel, et cetera?
I don't have my current budget in front of me, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you the different way, is there substantial increase in?
No, no.
That's all I need to do.
I can tell you real quickly.
Luana will tell you.
Our current office expense?
Well, no, because she's amended since the original budget, so I can't tell you, because what I just have printed is the budget as it was adopted, but she came back to court after the fiscal year began and requested some amendments.
Yes, because on the original budget for this year, only left me in the office without an assistant, so when we came back and amended the budget to add the assistant, I had to add under twenty-five hundred dollars, I believe, in my office expense to get the computer and the supplies that I needed for that, yes.
What did it start with last year?
Office expense itself started at seven fifty.
Okay, but then there was additional?
I think it was like twenty-five hundred for the computer and paper, just increase it, I think it's two thousand, twenty-five hundred might have been my original budget anyways.
It's already over three thousand?
Right, then they dropped it down to seven fifty.
Shelby was kind enough to share with the, I guess, your request for last year, and I'm not nitpicking you, but how come the bond went up?
Because now I have to bond Elaine also, and that's also her bond.
Have we got everything discussed, or left in these discussions?
The seven thousand, if we do the, we find a contract to do that this year, then that seven thousand would be.
Would be gone, yes.
Would be gone next year.
Yes, yes, and possibly the extra cost on the telephone, if we could get that included on there, once we get the cost of that, may lower also, because that twelve hundred would include the new phone, just turning it on, basically, is what they're gonna have to do, and change that number to what my number is, but I'll call the phone company.
Okay.
Why, why haven't we already taken care of that?
I honestly didn't think about doing that, I didn't.
Why was it in the book?
Because if you're going to allow me to remodel that building, then I, or that office building, then I would need to turn that phone line on.
I don't really understand, but I suppose I have to. Library is the next one. Is that correct?
Page forty-five. There's multiple pages following the forty-five.
Yes, sir. No, it's way at the end, just one of the end, flip, flip back from four or five pages.
We're ready, take off, good morning.
Okay, with the library system, and this will be covering all four libraries in the county. If you will give raises this year, we're requesting a five percent salary increase for the directors and the assistant directors. Kennedy and Corn City libraries are asking for a pay scale of ten dollars per hour for the part-time and summer library aides, to be more competitive with the job market in the county. They have some experienced workers and they would like to keep them. We figured retirement at the rate that it is now, and those things, I'm sure will probably change. Health benefits, we just figured that at four hundred and seventy dollars per person, I'm sure that will also change. Travel expenses will remain at twenty-five hundred dollars per year, and the library supplies, equipment, furnishings, miscellaneous expenses, that's budgeted at thirty-two thousand. And this is for all four libraries, so keep that in mind. I think there is a slight increase for that figure. For automation and technology, last year's budget was twenty-four thousand dollars. We are requesting twenty-six thousand this year to help cover the cost of the licensing fees for eBooks. Each of the libraries now offers eBook services. It is at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars per library, five hundred dollars is for the licensing fee, and through the overdrive system, we are required to spend one thousand dollars on the purchase of eBooks, so that is something that we have to budget for over here. Also, in automation and technology, is our licensing fees for our automation catalogs and checkout system, and that varies from library to library, because it's based on the number of materials that the library has cataloged. And of course, Kennedy and Corn City have a higher inventory than Boston and Roseville does. For insurance, and this is for the contents of all four libraries, that will remain at four thousand dollars per year. For books, we're asking for an increase of four thousand dollars, they go up continually. It's even shocking to me, after all this time, at twenty-five dollars for little bitty thin children's books, but that's the way of the world, so we are asking for an increase in books. For the summer reading program, we're asking for fourteen thousand dollars, which would come down to thirty-five hundred dollars per library. This is a big expense for each of the libraries, and the patrons benefit from the program, and they expect us to do something special for that month during the summer when we have our program. And last year, we were not able to get the funding because of excessive carryover. And as usual, any carryover funds are retained by the library system, and they will be used to upgrade computers, purchase copy machines and printers. And it also helps to cover the cost of books purchased when the new budget year begins and before the tax receipts start to come in. And that's our budget.
I picked up one item that was an increase, which was books, and I haven't pulled my last year's stuff out, but were there any, disregarding salaries, since that's not under consideration this morning, were there any other items that had increases, substantial increases or anything?
Books is the highest increase, two thousand dollar increase for automation and technology. Last year, it was budgeted at twenty-four thousand, and this year it's at twenty-six thousand, and that also covers the cost of computers and repair, so that's for all four libraries, keep that in mind. And then part, supplies, equipment, furnishings, and miscellaneous expenses, I think, I'm a little bit not sure what it was last year, but I think that's a little bit of an increase, I'm not sure.
Shelby got it out again, it's the same as it was.
Oh, is it, okay. So really, books and automation are the two line items that we've asked for increases in, and then the summer reading program, we'd like to do that as a separate line item.
Do the, I mean, is it probably crazy, do the cities contribute anything at all to the library within the building?
They pay for our utilities and phone, at least they do in all city, I think that's the case with the other libraries as well.
The cleaning, we also pay for the cleaning, which is.
Yeah, we pay for that out of our own funds.
Yeah, the city does pay for the.
Who is we, when y'all are saying we?
No, we pay for.
Who is we that you're saying? Who is "we" that you're saying "we" about?
About the.
Pay for our own phone.
Oh, at Ball City, I'm so sorry. It's at Ball City, we pay for our own cleaning.
Out of your local funds?
Yes, out of our local funds.
But then Ms. Lissy's indicating that the city, of course, pays for Corn City's.
Yes, we're paying for cleaning.
Cleaning.
The city is paying for Corn City cleaning the library.
And then Mrs. Stinger indicated that the city of Kennedy pays for the library cleaning.
And some of the utilities.
Right, utilities. And then, of course, they insure their buildings, because their buildings, the county just insures the contents of each library.
Each library is insured by the town in which it's located?
The physical structure, yes.
Just the building, yes, sir.
None of the salaries Dixie here have an increase, right? They're the same as they were last year, just you said there wasn't any kind of increase in salaries you would like a five percent?
We'd like to be included in that, but Kennedy and Corn City are specifically asking if their part, summertime and part-time help could be increased to ten dollars per hour from minimum wage, because, I mean.
And the part-timers, you're asking for that?
Yes, and usually that's.
That's the temporary part-timers.
Temporary, part-time, and summertime.
Because Ball City and Rungy have part-time assistant library directors.
Twenty hours?
Well, no, they vary by library. But what specifically the library board has asked for is, Corn City and Kennedy have part-time temporary positions that either work after school or during the summer programs, yes.
I see.
And that, those are paid at minimum wage right now.
Or as they call them in, that will.
Are those normally like high school children?
I think Corn City's is a student, I'm not sure about Kennedy's.
Kennedy's is a member. And he's been doing it several, several years in minimum wage.
And they come in when someone's ill, or someone's on vacation, or, and, because it's kind of hard to run it sometimes when it's just you, you by yourself, so.
On behalf of the library board, I did attend their annual meeting when they did their budget, and, not to throw roses, but I think they did a reasonably conservative job of everything. And I guess everybody has his approach. Mr. Chapman, Mr. David Chapman and I were supposed to go visit Judge Long and give him the insight into the functions of the library board. Obviously, we haven't done that, but he's on it. I just volunteered to go along with the moral support. But anyway, I appreciate the fact that they do take care of things in these communities. And I know in Kennedy and Corn City, it's very important, and it certainly is important in the small communities. It's a center, another center like the post office, where people can go and.
Absolutely.
And there's many other services available at the libraries that are non-book services, the Wesley nurse visits, there are social aspects and everything else, so the buildings are well utilized.
And I would also like to add, we are required by the state to provide a copy machine for public use, fax machine for public use, and computers for public use. So, you know, and like Mr. Reynolds said, in the smaller libraries, that is a big asset to have. And actually, having four libraries in this county is a big asset, when people start looking to move and make their homes here. That's a good point to bring out. Yes, we do have a public library, and we do have this access, so.
Dixie James was asking about raises. On your individual library pages, those salaries reflected are including the five percent increase, right?
Yes.
Here they are.
I just wanted to confirm that for James.
And I'll also hand it out to you each a copy of the last four minutes, where the board did approve the budget that we have to send in today.
That's the last page?
It was the one I just, it's up there on the. There's just two, one each in the office.
There's two, and how many hours are they?
It varies. Corn City has set hours for theirs for the duration of their summer reading program, is that correct?
Yes.
And then Kennedy's is.
Kennedy's is usually four weeks during the summer reading program, and then occasionally that coming in, if the librarian or her assistant can't be there for some reason, I might come in a few hours, like if somebody's sick, they'll be on.
Right, or if they're having some special programming or something, I need some extra help.
So it's not like every week, or it's just as needed?
Kind of, mostly.
And that's for Kennedy?
That's fine.
And Corn City has adopted hours?
Yes, they do have budgeted hours.
Twenty-five hours per week.
Yes.
From the temporary.
Just for, usually the duration of their summer reading program, which is about a month, maybe six weeks.
Okay, okay, four or six weeks. And nothing during the year, like Kennedy?
No, she hasn't, not during this last year so far, they haven't used her, except
Any other questions, comments? Anything else you want to say, Dix?
No, sir, I think that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And let's bring us to the sheriff's office.
And that is page twenty-six. It's two pages, they are legal-sized pages to include his descriptions. Thank you, guys.
Y'all there, take care.
Thank you.
Morning, guys.
Morning, Arliss, morning.
It's fine, sir.
Which one of y'all has the real stuff? Sorry, you want to, you could have just.
Can we clean the pit?
Before y'all start, I just want to comment, we're only three minutes off schedule.
Are we behind or ahead?
We're behind about three minutes.
Is there any questions on the budget itself?
It's starting off, first item.
You just want us to go with the items that there's increases?
Go down the.
Yeah, that's fine.
The items that we're asking for are changing, the first one is clothing allowance, which is, we've asked for a change to increase that because of the new jail staff. The two cooks, the maintenance people and the nurse were not included in the current budget because of the jail not, obviously not being open, and so we didn't have a clothing allowance. The jail commission refers that anybody that works in a confined facility like that, if there are maintenance person or a nurse or anything else, they be well-defined, the difference between the actual inmate and an employee. So I know the rest of the county maintenance people are not provided with uniforms, now some are on bridges, but if the maintenance people are gonna be working in that facility, the jail commission has recommended that we put a uniform on them to identify them. That's why we're asking for those additional five individuals to be added to the clothing allowance. The nurse actually has to wear scrubs because of the body fluids and blood and things, she's gonna be worse working around, that was not included in the current budget. And the two cooks also, that are gonna be in the kitchen, so that's why we've asked for those.
Chief, so that means there's a seven more?
There would be, you know, whatever the difference between they are now.
The two cooks.
And then we're asking for two, we're asking for two additional jailers, which we'll get to in a minute. If the jailers, and I'll tell you why we're asking for them, but they would also need clothing allowance, that's why there's seven difference. Those five plus the two jailer positions we're gonna talk about.
Okay, the five, with the nurse, the maintenance, two cooks.
There's two cooks, two maintenance people, a nurse, and two jailers.
How do you do the uniforms and stuff? Do you tell them to go buy it, or do y'all have a set place to go get it?
Sterling.
Sterling, they usually have the uniforms there, and, you know, it's the clothing allowance.
The payroll. We provide them with the gun and the basic leather equipment and all that, but as far as uniform, the county provides fifty dollars a month for they employ, six hundred dollars a year, so that's why it's written that way. So twenty-nine, it's going from twenty-nine four to thirty-three six, to have those in Any questions on that? We'll move down to janitorial supplies, which is down further currently in the budget. We have fifteen thousand, excuse me, we have seventy-five hundred, I'm sorry, in there for the current budget. But once we come online, the kitchen's gonna be, the, their dish soap, all the supplies that's in order to run a kitchen, the laundry service will have, will need a soap powder, things like that, to run the actual laundry in the jail, in addition to the paper supplies and our, obviously, the off, the supplies that'd be used to run the office, which is for your restrooms and things like that, so I've asked to increase that from seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand. The jail contract, as it's written, has some dispensers in there, but like, the jail commission requires in the laundry room, for example, you can't just have a box of soap sitting there, where an inmate cannot have access to it. You have to put the actual laundry soap in a locked closet, and you have to run a line through the wall to the actual machine, and there has to be a dispenser there to dispense the soap into the machine. And so that's what these additional costs are. We have to purchase those dispensers. The manufacturer who supplies the soap, they supply the setup, the lines, they do all the work, we just have to buy a basic dispenser to dispense it. So the actual person that's supplying the product is actually gonna provide those costs. We are gonna use a company called Matera, which is a local San Antonio company who has agreed to come in here and supply that for us, to save the county some money. We've worked with the auditor's office, and if it's under fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to bid that particular item, so on a fifteen thousand dollar item like that, they've agreed to do that. We just have to purchase the supplies and the minimum amount of dispensing equipment. The next one, if we move down the line, is cell phones. We currently are the administrator for the county cellphone contract. When I came here two years ago, I had a contact in Austin, I knew of a state contract where we could save the county a substantial amount of money on cell phones and on air cards used to run computers. So I contacted that cell rep, and he gave the county a state, state bid contract, which is basically an unlimited contract that allows the county to use phone service at an unlimited rate, at a very substantial reduced rate. And so the current price of air cards is thirty-seven dollars for air card per month, and cell phones are fifty-five dollars. We'd like to continue with that contract, but the reason there's an increase in cost is because every August, the state rebids that contract, and there, there's always an annual increase, and that's why that is. So I built in the annual increase into the contract that the AT&amp;T rep has provided. The county at one time had Verizon service here, but the Verizon service, the cost was extremely higher, that's why we went to AT&amp;T for better coverage and a substantial reduction in cost to the county. Even though you're talking about probably forty-five hundred dollars here on an increase, it includes those costs. And then also, we've added three more telephones to it, which will be the nurse, which previously we've not had, because she's gonna be on-call when she's not there, if we have something going on tonight, we have to be able to contact her at all times. Same way with the dietitian and the one maintenance man, so I've added three phones in there, because these people are the people that are gonna be on-call. So I'm not gonna give a county telephone, or the sheriff is not, to somebody that just wants one. These phones are being asked to be provided to people that are actually on-call. That will have to be come out, and if there's some kind of problem in the jail, they'll have to respond to that. So those additional costs of that forty-five hundred dollars is for the increase in phone plan and three additional phones.
So how many air cards do y'all have, and how many phones?
Okay, at the present time, we have thirty-four phones times fifty-five times twelve months. We're asking to go from thirty-four to thirty-seven phones. I'm sorry, I made a mistake here, I looked wrong, it's thirty-eight phones, but I'm trying to figure out where the other ones at here. I know where it's at, we had thirty-four, we added code enforcement, which got a phone, that makes thirty-five, so we currently have thirty-five, and we're asking for three additional, which will make it thirty-eight. So the additional cost, like I said, it would, the current budget is twenty-two thousand four forty, and it would go to twenty-seven three sixty. So you might got a calculator, you stood in between, that's about forty, let's see, fifty-one hundred dollars maybe?
And so only deputies have air cards on their computers to allow.
That's correct. Or their vehicles, correct?
That's correct. I know that a lot of times, cell phones and government agencies can be abused, or also can be, the price of air, air cards and phones can be abused. I've taken it upon myself to watch that, we do a monthly monitoring on what people are using. We have a cellphone policy in the county that is distributed among all the departments, not only the sheriff's office, that you don't use a cellphone for personal use or for any private business along with that. Also, we have a social media policy where they're not allowed to use our county cellphone to take pictures of events that go on in county and post them on the internet. So we have put those policies in place to make sure that the county is in compliance with not only liability issues, but we don't want that information out there because of HIPAA and a lot of other reasons. But the county has done a good job in controlling their cellphone cost compared to a lot of agencies. I've worked for other agencies that the cell phones are off the wall. That's why you obviously see me standing here, I have two phones, because the law changed in two thousand and ten, that says that any government entity, including employees, agencies, those, your personal phone now is, is subject to the Open Records Act. So if they file a request with any agency in this county, or any department in this county, and they ask for your cellphone records, if you use your personal phone for county business, all your personal items can also be discoverable. And that's the reason why we have a county cellphone for that. There's a certain couple of exceptions to that rule, but the courts have ruled here recently that there's very little privacy, so that's why we, as county employees, and I've suggested to the other department heads, don't use your personal phone for county business. Because if you do, under the current ruling, there's a current ruling that's just been out here in the last two years, your phone is subject to be taken and discovered, your personal pictures, your personal items, and all of that. So Herb Hancock and I have talked about it, and I know from my state days why we did it up there, but the law has changed on that ruling. So twenty-seven thousand is for the number of phones we have, I don't feel like it's unreasonable for this county.
Robert, the other day, you were working on a computer, because it said it had virus, and I asked you, I said, do y'all have virus protection on all your computers? And you expected me that you do a free download of ABG, but does CompSync offer any type of virus protection for their program?
They have a built-in firewall commissioner and some other things where they can't have their own system hacked, but as far as the local machines here now, we just get the ninety-day free thing that comes with the computer and file, or the thirty days, whichever it is. But to answer your question, no. This county, which I was hoping would employ an IT director sometime in the future, that's one of the things that the county as a whole, not only has the patrol car computer, but I've noticed it on all the desktops, because I installed that emergency system on all the desktops, none of, none of our county computers have an active antivirus program. So we're leaving our network wide open. And those are just things that you need to budget for every year, and upgrade your antivirus and your stuff every year. We've had two recent viruses on our patrol cars. If we catch it in time. If we catch it in time, I'm IT savvy enough where I rebuild it, wipe it all off and do that. We've had to have Jeff do one of ours recently because it had such a bad virus, we couldn't do anything with it. But the county does need, and their IT budget needs to put and figure out how many computers we have and actually be a little bit proactive in that, because they have not been in the past.
I will say, in the auditor's department, we do have antivirus on all three of ours, and they are current.
Well, I'll just tell you, I'll share another fact since you brought that up, we just got audited this past week by the state, the DPS came in and audited all our Tlets and all that, and we were fine, but our current antivirus was expired, so that's one of the things that gigged us on. So what I do is go back behind that and fix that, but that's one of the things that they look at also.
Well, it's a concern that I have with all the things that's been going on, because I hate for us to lose a computer system, you know, due to a virus, and I'm sure that some of the people, you know, we didn't have automatic updates when we started doing, because people will just probably forget to update.
Antivirus on a computer is kinda like putting tires on your car. You can have a hundred thousand dollar car and have cheap tires, and if you don't keep up with them, you know, it's gonna ruin the vehicle, and it's the same way with the computer.
But also, even your Norton antiviruses, your McAfee's, those are nominal costs to protect information, but they also are very user-friendly and self-installable. I don't see why it is, and I see all the bills that we constantly are paying Texas CompuFix just to install an antivirus. That's ridiculous. It takes maybe thirty minutes of time, but yet we pay somebody eighty-five dollars an hour to do it.
If this county had an IT director, that would be one of their, or an IT person, I should say, that would be one of their daily things is to go around and do that. You can now buy packages for agencies, that's what we did to state, whether it's McAfee or whatever, you buy one package deal, you go around and install it on every computer that the county owns, and see, if you buy an individual package, you can only use it on one machine.
Well, we buy it where it covers all three, that's where we buy it, but that's a department head's downfall right here, because they're, it's simple. Press uninstall, it takes the old one off, you press install and it installs the new one.
It all comes down to dollars and cents, that's all it is. If it's fifty bucks a machine, you have a hundred and fifty machines, you're just gonna have to budget for that amount of money, that's all it is, is dollars and cents, but I guarantee you over the long run, we're paying the computer guy eighty-five dollars an hour to come and clean these machines, it's ridiculous, and it needs to be budgeted and put in there.
Well, there may need to be some type of policy adopted by the court also of use of computers. You know, a lot of people streamline music during their workday, et cetera, which that affects your internet access, your speed, et cetera. That way, opening all different kinds of things can hinder your operation as well as infect you with viruses. It's just, and I go back to the cost, the installation of an antivirus, the cost is minimal, and the time to do it, there's no reason that we should be paying an outsider, every department could do their own.
That's the reason why we have policies on cell phones, on social media, and on computers that are not gonna be sitting out in the patrol car and saw the road, watching or playing music on there or downloading stuff you're not supposed to be doing, because Shelby called me the other day in a computer, and they wanted the vehicles that had a virus on, I was there, I wear many hats in a day, but I'm very computer literate, so I was out there cleaning the computer, and he asked me why, why spending my time to do it, well, if you wanna pay a computer guy to come over there and charge you eighty-five dollars an hour, I can do that myself, and I do that on many occasions, I've done a lot of them in the last two years, and that's just me, I like getting things done, I like saving the taxpayers money, but to answer your question, some of those things could be prevented, and I do a lot of that work myself. Any other questions on the cell phones? Okay, the next one is auto liability, which is about three-quarters down the page. We recently, we have learned, I should say, that when you buy a Chevrolet Tahoe for a police vehicle, and you have a thirty-five thousand dollar vehicle, that's only the wheels and the engine and the body compartment. When it's all said and done, you put about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment in those vehicles, and this includes the radios, the radars, the petitions, the computers, and all of that stuff. In the county, I made a suggestion to LaWanna here several years ago when I came back, and I learned this through the hard way, through the state tolling out vehicles all the time, if you turn over a Tahoe, or one of them overheats and it burns up completely to the ground, you're gonna lose twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment. We've had two vehicles totaled here recently, we just had one the other day where one of our deputies got ran into in the back, he was parked, turning a left at an intersection, truck came up behind him, rear-ended him and totaled the car out, and luckily, not a lot of our equipment, our injuries, damage in that one. The previous one, we had earlier this year, a deputy was going down the road chasing a violator, and a two-thousand-pound bull came out, and it came right to him, we have this on video, came right up to the center line, he took evasive action, did not hit the bull, but he turned over in the middle of the roadway four times, and he's currently out with a bunged-up leg, he's been out for probably a year now, but we lost a vehicle there, the county did not have that equipment insured, so the county lost twenty thousand dollars right there in equipment, because that vehicle was not insured. The insurance is gonna pay the vehicle, but we're not gonna cover the insurance, none of the equipment, we lost the computers, everything in the car, total loss, and that's just not acceptable in my book, so we talked about it, and for this increase, we increased the number of vehicles by the type of equipment we have, and it's gonna be a four-thousand-dollar increase from last year's budget to do that. But I'll tell you, in the long run, folks, it's just cheap to insure it, that tax, tax provides a good insurance, and if you lose that amount of money, just have them reimburse it for it. We have a minimal deductible and that, and it's just, you know, the vehicle itself is a lot of money, but when you put all that stuff in there, it really adds up, you're talking about fifty thousand dollars plus per vehicle, so every one of those sheriff vehicles you see running down the road, there's fifty thousand dollars there.
So it's four thousand additional?
Increase in order to the premium.
Ensure.
Ensure everybody.
All additions?
Yes.
When you said computers and stuff and contents, do the inmates' vehicles insure that one?
Yes. We have, tax has changed the requirements as far as insuring equipment, because equipment has gotten so expensive years ago, you just give them a value of the vehicle once equipped, and they would honor insurance claims on that, but now they want itemizations, they want you to have the invoices supporting the cost of that equipment, so our insurance files have become quite thick.
Anyway, there's a four thousand dollar increase in the premium and the additional coverage that the county's asked for to cover these vehicles. The next one is ammo, which is a minor item, last year we had fifteen hundred dollars in there because of the cost of ammo, because of additional people we added last year, I increased that by one thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred, because we went over in our budget slightly this year, right at it, because of just the cost of keeping people, the law requires that we have to keep them certified every year. We'll go down to vehicles. Last year, the sheriff's office had a hundred and eleven thousand sixty dollars in there for the vehicles that we bought last year, which was four Tahos. Currently, we have two totaled out vehicles, which is two wreck replacement vehicles that are damaged, the insurance paid the county for those vehicles, so we have two, so I'm asking, or sheriff's asking for two to replace the two wrecked ones, and then we're asking for one additional Tahoe to replace a Crown Victoria that has a hundred and fifty-eight thousand miles on it, and then we have one truck, one of our pickups has a hundred and twenty thousand miles, and the transmission's bad, and if the transmission keeps jumping in and out and has a major problem, it's gonna cost about five thousand dollars to put a transmission in that truck, so I wanted to ask the court about that, if y'all, I think it'd be feasible to the county just to replace that truck. It's a two thousand and ten model, it's five years old, and it has a hundred, like I said, a hundred and twenty thousand plus miles, and it's got a bad transmission, so I just feel like with the cost of it, it would be better just to replace that vehicle instead of spending five thousand dollars. The last two patrol cars, by the way, that we have auctioned off, we got a hundred dollars for one, I think two hundred for the other, so it just doesn't make any sense to put five thousand dollars in a vehicle, that's what, worth nothing. If you take it to auction, you might get a thousand less or less, so that's why I'm asking for the two replacement vehicles, the one additional Tahoe to replace the Crown Vic, and then the pickup. And basically, we had a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the budget last year for those four, and with the increase of vehicles this year, it goes to one thirty-six, so you're talking about about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
Robert, where does the insurance money go, doesn't that offset some of those costs?
Yes, sir, it goes to the general fund.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it will, I'm sorry, Commissioner, yeah, we did, that money goes back to the general fund and it offsets these costs.
So the net on the vehicles would be some substantial portion less than a hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, I didn't account for that, that's just the cost, but yeah, if you did up the insurance money collected off both those total vehicles, yes, sir.
Another item, and I realize our long-suffering jail is not up and running, but I noticed that we have fifty thousand dollars for prisoner detention this year, and I think that was the same as last year.
I apologize, I skipped over that deal, there's a note off to the right, if you look at your note, it says juveniles there? Yes. The reason we did that, because currently, we have, as you know, we have an active murder case where we have two juveniles in custody, which could be a long-term deal, they've been in custody for eleven weeks now, and if we go out of this year into the new budget, in addition to the, whatever's gonna take us down the road, we're gonna need money to house juveniles in Victoria and also in Jordington, we use either one of those facilities, the rest of the cost should be absorbed in our own jail, but we're obviously can't house juveniles here.
Did you know they will house juveniles in the new jail either?
No, sir.
If we detain juveniles anywhere else, that's out of a different departmental budget, that's not out of the sheriff's department budget.
Okay, so it does not come out of our?
Not if they're housed elsewhere.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, that comes out of the judicial budget, there's a specific line item for juvenile detention.
Then we could probably scratch that in or substantially reduce that line.
Is it one of that, that includes medical bills and everything else?
Correct. If they are housed elsewhere, then it comes out of the judicial budget, and there's a specific line item for juvenile detention.
You know, I really, I don't know, I've said this last year and I'll say it again, I really think that in the sheriff's budget, you need to have a detention budget by itself and a...
You mean a jail budget?
Jail budget certainly could be in there, we create, if you have a new facility that is gonna be uncharted waters, we're gonna have to know the total cost of how we're actually operating a jail, and it's gonna skew your sheriff's patrol costs, because it's gonna, it's not nearly the true picture of what's going on.
You look at the bottom line, you're a hundred percent right, you look at the bottom line of this budget, and you look at the, what it's gonna cost to run that jail, yes, I agree with you.
I mean, just, because you've got different, you have different, your salaries are gonna be different from that, and a lot of other things, to me, they should be separated.
Well, what we plan on doing, to tell y'all, is we're going to, so we're going to uncharted waters, we're going to be looking at the food cost, electricity cost, all the utilities that go along with it, we're going to be looking at that the first year, month by month, so we're gonna see exactly where we stand, so as I told you, all the sheriff told you in last year's budget, it's kinda flying by the seat of our pants right now until we find out, we're hoping that we've got it covered, but again, we'll just have to play that by ear and see. I don't think we've built any extra padding in here, I think we've used a nominal fee, we've looked at the past costs, and we based it on the number of inmates and the days per year, and I think we've got a very conservative budget when it comes to that jail. So again, that's y'all's call as far as the, if you wanna leave that prisoner detention in there, I'm hoping that we don't need that, but unless you would wanna reduce it to a lower rate.
Well, you'll still have to house certain prisoners elsewhere, will y'all be available for housing female detainees here? Pregnant female detainees?
That's different. That's not big two.
Well, we have to, because those, only certain places except those.
The jail commission rules, we have one wing in the new jail that's gonna hold thirteen females, if we exceed that capacity, then we'd have to move the things around to make it work, it could work, but if not, we'd have to house them somewhere else.
So if you have zero females, is that space occupiable for male detainees?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not like we're gonna be losing thirteen beds if we don't have?
Yes, and we also have GEO too, we can house females there, so whatever's overflowing there, we can take the GEO or vice versa.
So technically, in the golden scheme of things, in the good picture, we shouldn't have any outside prisoner detention unless we?
If the juveniles don't come out of his budget, that money can be given back to the county.
Very minimal.
Yeah, very minimal.
I mean, I wouldn't say do it at zero, but I would put some nominal amount.
Y'all have a suggestion, Court?
Well, my thing I was gonna ask from Nick is what about your mental health inmates and your, and the one that said you're, you know, you may have some that are gonna require medical and you bring them in, I mean, are we gonna, is there a way to deal, I mean?
We have a medical?
We have a medical deal and a prison, teaching deal and prisoner care, so we broke it down by category, but that actual line item that Commissioner was talking about, that's just, you know, paying detention and other, you know, other places.
How much per day are we being charged, not juvenile, but for adults?
Thirty, well, Adams Scotia charges us like thirty-eight, and Livo County is thirty-five, and Wilson is thirty-six, I believe.
I think what we had done budget-wise previously was a standard of forty-five per day.
Have y'all estimated what it's gonna cost y'all per day to house a defendant?
As far as you're talking about the new jail now?
Yeah.
Because we don't know that, Commissioner, to be honest with you, we have looked at it, we've looked at the food cost and everything, we have not put a bottom line to it, no, sir.
Do y'all plan to, maybe if you have, because we have GEO beds, your overflow, have y'all considered allocating space to other counties to house somebody else's inmates at a certain cost?
As far as with the rollover, like, do you use a thirty bed of GEO that's a transfer? We haven't looked at it, but I mean, we discussed it, we kinda brought it up.
So we plan on utilizing the thirty free beds here, and then everybody else go to here, and then if whatever's left, that will be something for future discussion, yes.
And I know GEO houses for Bear County, so I mean, if for some reason they need more room and we're not using that room, maybe?
I don't see why they can't.
A hundred days and forty-five dollars is forty-five hundred dollars, and it's hawking in terms of this fifty thousand dollar budget, so, you know, if you put in ten thousand instead of fifty, that'd give you two hundred prisoner days, that might be a little relief now.
Yeah, let's do that, I'm gonna go ahead and make a line item, ten thousand, that's line item. Attention, someone. Any other discussion on that? We had bought some replacement equipment last year, which included some rifles and shotguns and stuff, we had a ten thousand, three hundred dollar budget last year, I reduced that to thirty-eight hundred dollars because, under that weapons line item, because we have to buy some additional items for the new jail, it requires a gas gun and some additional items that we did not purchase for the opening of the jail this year, but we do have a problem in the jail, and you'd have an inmate that would take somebody hostage or whatever, we have to buy a little equipment, that's why I left that thirty-eight hundred dollars in there. On the air cards, I think, we briefly talked about that, but the air cards, there's gonna be a price increase that's gonna go from thirty-seven ninety-nine to forty-two dollars, that's what the difference is under the state contract. The other big-ticket item that we're asking for is a, currently in our computers, in our patrol vehicles, we have thirty-one computers. When they did the computer deal two and a half years ago, the particular laptop that they sold the county at that time before I came back here, in computer terms, was a thirty-two bit program. In order to do the videos, in order to do the things properly, it takes a minimum of sixty-four bits to run a computer to take video. Luckily, COPS, they recognize that they made a mistake, they sold the county something they shouldn't have sold them, it came down to the fact that they've agreed to buy them back, they're gonna buy those twenty-four back, but there's a difference in the additional software, the things that we want to, that we want to make this equipment right, and that's why I put that money at the bottom of that, to upgrade twenty-four computers for the patrol cars, and that's the reason for that. Currently, we spend more time fixing computers and having problems than having COPS come down and work on what it's worth, so that's why I'm asking to upgrade those twenty-four computers. What they're gonna do is take the old computers back, and they're gonna furnish a brand-new computer as a replacement, and with all the proper equipment that's gonna be used to run these videos.
For the twenty thousand dollars?
I'm sorry?
For the twenty thousand dollars, because your description indicates that sixty-nine-two thirty-five is the equipment? two thirty-five is the equipment from the wrecked car, plus twenty thousand, what exactly is the total that you're asking for, for that line item? Is it the eighty-nine two thirty-five?
It's the eighty-nine two thirty-five, and that includes the, all the replacement cost and the replacement, uh, for the, the, op, Cops Inc. for the two new vehicles, uh, and then to upgrade those other twenty-four computers. Because obviously, the, uh, the equipment's gonna have to be replaced in the totaled-out car, car, so.
There's two, there's two.
Chels, if they made a mistake on the twenty-four computers, are they giving us a hundred percent back of the? They are not.
No?
No.
What percentage are they giving?
Herb and I have already talked about that, but after Herb looked at the contract and looked at the deal that the county signed before I came back here, there was nothing, it was not included in there, it was beyond the warrant, warranted period before they found that, so, they graciously could've told us to buy, we're not paying nothing, but they graciously agreed to work with us and buy the old stuff back, so, they have substant, is that a substantial, uh, that seems like a lot of money, but it gave out two hundred thousand dollars to replace those twenty-four computers and all the stuff that goes with it, so they gave us a, a substantial reduction.
I noticed in last year's budget, as well as in this year, and I guess some of this money gets, and, and I, I'm not being facetious, but lost in the system, that each year, there's ten thousand in flash money, I think it's what you're turning, uh, and I didn't look to see how your spending was coming out so far this year, but is that pretty much a standard item? I, I understand what, I have a basic understanding of what you use it for, if you're doing undercover work, and this, that, and the other, but just tell me a little how it works, how that part of the problem works, and I realize, in the grand scheme of things, it's not much money.
Correct. Mr. Reynolds, that is just special assignments that we do, uh, on a daily basis or weekly basis, uh, and we use that money towards that.
And I'll, I'm the administrator of that money, Mr. Reynolds, just to kinda clear the air, because in that kinda sensitive type work, you can't actually put that money out there for, for the public to see that, uh, I'm the administrator of that, when the auditor's gonna come in, they come and audit my books, so if, if any money's used for those type of operations, the money's issued, I issue it to the individuals, make sure that it's something, you know, double-signed, that all the things are done properly, and so I'm the administrator of that, of those two accounts, and then, uh...
Since the auditor's not objecting, I'm assuming everything is correct.
That is correct. We have discussed this in very detailed conversations.
Robert, you wanna address that, it was two extra people?
Yes, uh, yes, for the jail, and, and the jail inspector was here two weeks ago, and took a walk-through through the jail, and looking at the progress and all that. Right now, we currently have ten jailers on staff, and, uh, it's gonna require four shifts of three jailers, and the reason the jail commission's gonna say that rule is because you have central control in this jail, what that basically means, is that you have to have one jailer in this pod that's gonna control everything, locks the doors, cameras, and all. Then that leaves two on the floor, if you have a suicide watch, if somebody's under suicide watch, or if the nurse thinks that somebody has to go to Otto Kaiser, or to another medical facility, and that jailer has to go with them, that only leaves one on the floor. Currently, the jail commission rules say you have to have one jailer per forty-eight inmate jail, whether you're, whether it's that capacity or not, you have to have one jailer. So, in order for it to ma, to make this work, is we're gonna have to have twelve jailers on staff for four shifts, and that's the way it's gonna be, and that will also cover sick time, vacation time, or whatever. So, after we met with him and looked at the numbers, we realized we're two jailers short to make this work, in order to meet the minimum standards. You know, we, at some point, it may require additional people once we get in there, and the sheriff determines if you need some.
The, the problem that we're having also is, as far as when we deal with a prisoner that's in custody, and we have to call Camino Real, M H M R, a lot of the times, they're putting them on suicide watch, okay? Some of them require constant supervision, so the jailer actually has to sit there twenty-four seven and watch the, the offender. We do have, uh, two, uh, dorms that we can watch them, but if we, we're up to three or four, then that's gonna take another, uh, jailer to watch the other two. And, I'm gonna be honest with you, lately, we have been having a lot of offenders in custody that they're under, uh, M H M R, uh, we have to call them, and we take them to the hospital, and we have to put them under observation a long period of time.
But you use a jailer?
See, you use the jailer, yes.
That's where you have to come into?
Correct.
You'd have to actually visit and document for the jail commissioner every thirty minutes?
Yeah, somewhere fifteen minutes.
Hundred fifty, or else too. And so, that's the reason why we're asking, not that we need them, it's gonna be required, I mean, it's gonna be something that we, not that we want them, it's that we need them or they're required, in order to meet the minimum standards. Once they come down here, whenever this thing is done, uh, they're gonna wanna see that, and that's why we're asking the court to give us that. We could probably use deputies or whatever, we have to, for the time being, if that jail opened between now and this budget, I, we actually need them right now, to be honest with you, but I know it's not in the current budget, so we'll try to make, do what we can till October, till the new money starts.
And then right now, we're also using a restraining chair that we have, and we can also place them where they need to be, and we can roll them next to, if we have another one that's in custody, then put them next to them, that's how we're covering.
There's thirty-two thousand five hundred and twelve twenty-three, you, you used the midpoint on that one? Of the salary survey last year?
I think I went back to the starting pay after talking to LaWanna.
You went to the?
Checked out LaWanna.
Which of your?
Yes, to the beginning salary. No, I take you back, I, I'm not, I'm not correct on that, if thirty-two is the midpoint, thirty-two whatever, I think thirty-one something is the beginning, so, that is my mistake then, I'm sorry, 'cause it is, uh, when, after I talked to LaWanna, she said, no, that anybody hired after October one would have to go back to the starting pay.
Because we're still working on that right here, so that may, that may vary there.
Okay, so I, I apologize for that, James, that thirty-two, whatever it is, is the starting pay currently for jail. I think that's all we have as far as changes, and that's, there was one other item, let me bring to your attention, that, uh, uh, since we, since the new red view tower was built there, and the fencing currently for the jail, I, we put in, I think, in there that one line item, you may have seen a note in there about a fence and about a?
Canopy.
Canopy. Judge Long and I had discussed during our visit with the sheriff, that Holt Caterfield had recommended that we just buy, build a nominal cover over that generator over there, to make sure that, you know, that it's protected from the weather and all that, so that's why I put that in there along with that fence. If the fence does not cover the entire tower area, because the tower has steps that goes all the way to the ground, it's a liability for the county, if a child would get there and crawl that tower, three-hundred-foot tower, and something would happen to them, the county's gonna be liable, so, uh, uh...
So, the canopy, fence, tower, and miscellaneous is support for the twenty-five thousand dollars that you showed there?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Sheriff, put some words for liner, liner?
It's on your sexy page.
Second bit?
Like, line seven.
I think it's, it's different on ours, Sheriff, we have an old, uh, deal, but...
Equipment from you, Joe?
Yes.
Counting the generator, fence, tower, and miscellaneous.
After we went down there and looked at the completion of that, didn't realize that that tower has step ladder steps all the way to the ground, and that's a big liability and danger, so it has to be enclosed in, so...
You don't want the current city high school flag, block?
Absolutely, or some graffiti on top of it, or something. So, that's the reason we, that's, and that's all we had, that's all the changes we had, so...
Professor, how are you relative to your, this year's budget?
I'm sorry?
Where are you relative to this year's budget?
We are in very good shape on this year's budget, because, uh, obviously, the jail hasn't been open, we didn't use, uh, only one quarter of the food costs, like, we budgeted two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in food costs to run that jail, so it, because we house for free a G O, and whatever food costs to people we have housing here, so we went only, only over, uh, two items, and, and one was the auto liability, and one was the other, uh, minimum cost, but we're in very good shape on our budget.
What did your bottom line number for, uh, the next budget cycle?
Uh, LaWanna, did you put that? I did not calculate, I did not, I'm sorry, to answer your question, I didn't put a total figure, I, I think it should be substantially less than what it is now. Because, yes.
If it's what I've got on here, it would be, uh, see, about, uh...
If you're looking at a computer generator total, that wouldn't be right.
Okay.
Yeah, I was looking at the four million last year, but, but, uh, we cut out a bunch of stuff out of there, from what we had last year, but...
Okay, so it'd be less?
Yes, man, it's gonna be less.
Do we have any idea when we're gonna be in? I mean, we've never, driving around, updated the arrangements here the other day, and didn't say a word, or when we're gonna be able to use the jail?
The last thing they gave was, uh...
July thirty-first. Uh, she gave set forty-five days, she said that they had a good meeting the other day, that they're gonna double their crews, and right now, just to update y'all a little bit, they're laying the tile, they have some touch-up work, uh, the office furniture, everything's there, the only thing that's waiting to be completed is the floor tile, some of the ceiling tile, and finished the courtroom, looks like the jail itself is done, uh, they're just doing the cosmetic stuff, and so, and then add, obviously, the landscaping, and I think some metal that needs to go above the windows, but she thinks, she thinks they can get it done in forty-five days. Then we built in a thirty-day window, as I previously announced, to move everything, so we're hoping, we're hoping exception for one, we be able to run, is what we're, that's what we're shooting for, so...
Robert, I have a lot, I'm sorry, Ms. Ivers, go ahead. Oh, I'm just wondering, that, y'all had said something about some, being able to train over there, uh, have y'all started training over there yet, or have you had that chance?
We can't occupy duly, Ms. Ivers, that, uh, until we get what they call substantial completion of the building, they don't allow us in there, 'cause it's a hard hat area, we can't do anything there until they finish.
Because some of these employees that will be in the new jail have already been hired and are on payroll right now, there's a lot of questions being asked as to what they're doing, since they're already being paid, I mean, we obviously don't have anywhere for jail cooks to be cooking, uh, we don't have any reception area for a receptionist to be receiving, so what are these?
The receptionist is, if you walk in her office, she sits there in the front with the other two clerks, and she also is training, uh, they're showing her as far as the phone system, the file system, and stuff like that, that they're doing. The, uh, the dietitian, cook, and her assistants are working on menus, and also, we have met with, uh, the bad food service, and working on, uh, the amount, the foods that we order, and make sure that we stay under our budget, that's what they've been working on.
Also, training on jail commission rules, because the rules require the dietitian and the, uh, cook meet certain guidelines, they're doing all of those, plus, we had to work with another nutritionist, which we had, the state graciously providing one free to the county that's working with those two ladies, because not only do you have to have dietary requirements, you have to have nutritionary requirements for inmates, so we have a, a nutritionist that's been coming down, working with those ladies.
So, the whole time bologna sandwich doesn't fly anymore?
No.
No. The, the nurse also had to come up with some jail plans as far as, uh, in medical, how the offenders are screened and T V tested.
Protocols.
The protocol sheet also has to come up with, and we have to provide the jail.
There's just been a lot of questions out there, and I figured now would be a good time to address them.
Well, uh, I'm not the contractor, so, you know, you know, I'm not doing the jail, so, you know, it's gotta wait.
Obviously, if there've been questions about them sitting around in the hall and some other places, we have them on the computer doing what they're supposed to be doing, so, they're not pre-loading, just put it that way, uh, so we're trying to get them up to speed, so when we get to that point, they can go down there. Also, uh, we have taken them to the jail multiple times, 'cause the jail was not set up as an infirmary, as far as the actual jail contracts, there has to be a bed added, there has to be curtains for, you know, to examine an inmate, things like that, so the nurse has been doing her part. We've had the two cooks over there in the kitchen, going training on that equipment, seeing what all is there, so there's a lot of things behind the scenes that are going on, in preparation of getting it over there, so once we walk into the door, we'll be ready to go.
What you're saying is a delay might be a hidden blessing.
I'm sorry?
I say, what you're saying is a delay may have been a hidden blessing, and the opportunity to get more nearly up to speed than to have to walk in and go to a full run.
Well, the jail commissioner, or jail commission inspector, when he comes, uh, to turn that over to the county, he's gonna ask for those items, and that's why we brought these people on board, saying, first thing he's gonna say is, where is your dietitian, your, your menu's at, and I need the nutritional requirements that was assigned off by the new, there's all of those requirements, so, we did a little, the sheriff did a little free planning and put all this in, in place before we get there, 'cause they're gonna, they won't issue an occupancy certificate for that jail, and that's all those requirements are met.
So, hopefully, we'll be able to occupy in less than normal days after receiving substantial completion.
I didn't see D P S listen on these units anywhere to discuss, are we gonna get a D and B office by any chance, for, for, a renewal of driver's license for the citizens in the area, or are, are you planning on opening another office, or, the D P S is not on your budget here, and they can have a, a budget stage, they were sent it past?
They have not requested any differences, therefore, there's not a presentation to be made. Uh, there is the opportunity to have driver's license renewals through another office in the county, just renewals, and the conversation has been to do that through the elections office, since a photo I D is also required for elections, et cetera, uh, that hasn't fully come down the pipe yet.
No testing, just renewals.
Right.
They've been going through some changes also, they have getting a new sergeant that will start here on the first of, of this, of July, so I think there's some things that haven't been decided yet as far as that goes, and they also got additional, uh, license and wait trooper assignment in this county, also, they'll be tuning out, so, I think there's some changes in the, in the way they're, you know, leaving.
Those, the changes won't be funded by county dollars, they are not requesting for any change in their county.
That is correct.
I was just, uh, to answer a part of Ms. Hall's question, um, I just wanna make sure that, that everybody understands, it's not really, that in the counties, um, we don't get the choice whether we want a D and B office or not, we have expressed on a number of occasions, I know, I believe you've called, uh, I don't know if you've called Judge Long, but I believe it was, uh, Judge Butler that had called, and maybe some of the others, I don't know, but I also have called, when, when we came out with voter I D, I was asking, and, and that is, uh, Texas Department of Public Safety has just decided that they're not opening up any offices, and that's the answer I get every time, so that's, uh, higher up, so, you know, like, when you talk to legislators and things like that, that's something, if, uh, if our county really does want it, and I see a definite need for, for that here, um, they are, right now, their response is that it's close enough in Florisville and Beville, and they don't see a need for that, but LaWanna's right in the fact that they have passed some legislation that may allow us to do some, uh, some renewals, but those would be renewals only, not, you know, not the new licenses or anything like that, so, I just wanted to make sure that, that they know, that has been addressed, we've talked about it a number of times, but it's not up to the county, it's up to D P S.
It's definitely a need for one, we, we get a lot of inquiries through our office about our license, so, it's definitely a need for one.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
But before we close, uh, I think we're almost to close on all of the other things, we can't close without the judge saying so, but I read something in the PAC deal the other day about, uh, something the legislature came up with, and I, I understood it, but I didn't understand it. Do y'all know are we supposed to start filming and making commissioners' court sessions available on the web as a county, uh, requirement? Uh, I, that was the impression I got out of Shelby.
I think it's population of over a hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
And it's mandated?
Okay, it didn't, what I read did not give a, a barrier on the thing, and I just wondered if we were gonna have to wind up doing it, I mean, I know Joe does it most of the time as a community service for his newspaper, but I, I was hoping we weren't gonna get saddled with that, from what you're saying, obviously.
We have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that's all I have, thank you.
You have any further? James has given everybody a copy of his, uh, proposal, if, if, if we're talking about, or if you want.
Port County salaries, I know the salaries, sir.
The Corning County salaries, I know the salary survey...
The salary survey, we did a survey on there and we did, uh, minimum, mid, medium, you know, whichever way, or a max. This is just my proposal on this, and everybody's gonna have their opinion on it and everything, but I say that new hires should go to the minimum and from minimum to medium or midpoint, you go at five percent, five percent, five percent, and when you do a three-years completion of that, then you go to the midpoint. And after the midpoint, you go as the salary survey stated, three percent, three percent for five years. Once the five years are completed, you get to the max. That would be for the new hires. Now, there's new hires, that's, from medium, from midpoint to max, is gonna be pertaining to all the present employees and to new hires with seven years and experience and up. The only way that you could get to a midpoint or a medium would not be, it would be proof that the employee, the new employee that's put up the application has up to seven years experience and up. If you have one-year experience, but it has to be in the same field, not, you can't just have experience in working, it has to be in the same field, whatever you're putting in your application. If you got one year, you go up, no experience would be the, the minimum. One year would be five percent past whatever the minimum range is. Three years' experience would be five more percent past that range. Five years would be an additional five percent, you'd be fifteen percent over the minimum if you had five years' experience. Ten percent, three years, five percent, one year, no experience, you'd be at, start at the minimum. If you have seven years' experience and up, you'd start at the midpoint. It's really simple, I used, uh, I used ten dollars to start off with. Uh, one year would be ten fifty, three years would be eleven, five years would be eleven fifty, and then your midpoint would be twelve dollars. After that would be, three percent would be twelve thirty-six, and twelve seventy-two, thirteen oh eight, thirteen forty-four, thirteen eighty, you get to the five-year completion, then you'd go to the max of fourteen dollars and sixteen cents. Of course, I didn't pick anybody's, anybody's salaries out, anybody's hourly wage, I just chose a wrong number, ten dollars. Like I said, it can, it can be changed around if y'all wanna do the three years in increments of one, two, three, rather than one, three, five years. I just put one, three, five, and seven years to see if we could attract employees with more experience and get the job done quicker.
I was busy with LaWanna yesterday, about, I guess, two and a half hours, and we looked at the salary survey and we discussed, um, taking the midpoint and moving it to the minimum, because the sheriff's office, if you go to the current midpoint, I don't think you're gonna find anybody that's, let's say, a thirty-six thousand that'll come to work in Corning County, because right now, the, I think Wilson County is at forty, and Adeskosos is probably around forty also, forty-one, forty-three, so it's, it's, the whole, when we did the salary survey, and my whole thing was that, about the salary survey was, was try to set up a, like you did here, a, a, the standard way of, of making sure people progressed in, 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 uh, salary if, if it was available. But we talked about moving the midpoint again to the minimum would be the starting salary and the current ones that are in the midpoint now, if the court decided to do it, nothing's been discussed, but if we follow the pay plan, which is three percent for a year, which I mean, there'd be five years between three percent and, uh, and the midpoint. So, and that was, some of them right now, to me and my, my interpretation, we are in occurring in our second year of, of the, of the salary survey, if you did at the midpoint. I mean, at the minimum from where everybody's at with three percent. But, and then it would take five years for anybody to get to the midpoint, and then if you got, if you got a, uh, promotion, like if you took a different range of pay, you'd have to go back to the minimum to start with, you know, of, of your, of your pay at, at another level. Say, if you was a level one person in some field and you went to level two, or you, you started the level two midpoint, minimum, minimum, wherever that would be. And, uh, and then we could continue on the rest of the way with the salary survey goes. Uh, it'd be, and then we talked about after five years, if we decide to do longevity, give somebody like ten dollars or twenty dollars a, a year for every year of service after five years, but they'd have to complete that fifth year in December, then they would, you know, it would also give a little bit of a...
Tension.
Yeah, retention plan to do that. And, uh, it was just something that we worked on for a long time. LaWanna, you anything you wanna say about that, or?
Not at this point. I'd rather have the numbers before we really discuss it.
Yeah, James's figures are very well done, um, and what I'd like to take a look at is getting out to the maximum, and he started with ten on the bottom end and worked upward. I'd like to take what we want to be at for a given position in maximum and work backward, use the same figures, you can do it, just work backward, and we'll wind up with a little, a little higher starting than ten dollars, but that would...
That was just a long...
Yeah, but this, the, the layout you have is excellent, I think that, I think it's well-taken and well-done, and it, uh, it gives them something additional during the years that they start in a lower salary, their percentages increases, and then as they begin to max out, years-wise, the, the percentage increases, uh, shrink a bit. But I think it's a great idea, I just, and I'm, I'm always on the cheap, obviously, or most of the time, but I, I think that probably when we get to these long-term employees who are valuable, we need to reward them, perhaps some of this longevity pay, as long as it doesn't get too much where we get somebody who's dead wood and they can't get rid of them, and, you know, because they've been here twenty years, but anyway.
I think you also bring up a good point, Mr. Reynolds, relative, speaking about the dead wood. You know, you gotta have performance in there for this. This cannot be an automatic, just because you're in a job for five years, you've worked up to where you get, you know, automatic three percent, five percent. So again, a performance plan has to be in place for all departments in administering this process, if it is agreed to. I think the question I had for Shelby on changing the midpoint to minimum, was that strictly for that, for that type of job? Are you talking about all the...
Oh, that'd be, the mid, the current midpoint would be the new minimum.
Because the commissioners' court last year at budget time adopted to move everyone to the midpoint, so what his suggestion is that the mid is now the new minimum and then we will calculate out the new max based on the fifteen percent.
Several people watched that substantial license and it's only been here for a year by, by making that adjustment from the minimum to the median. So what happens then when you have a new employee? That employee's gonna start at that minimum?
At the new minimum, which is currently the mid.
Right. Yeah, it may be, that may be an issue.
There is no minimum, it's median.
Right, it's really just two.
Just forget saying minimum, you're, you're starting at median.
Well, but then, first, there'll be two, but then we're gonna calculate a new max.
That's what I'm saying, so then where's the max?
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
None of this has been decided.
No, that's right, I understand, no, we're just talking about possibilities.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but you don't go out of here and be saying that's what they did, and that's not what's happening.
No, this is just a thought.
And it may or may not happen.
That's correct, that's what, I understand that. I'm just asking for, you know, what is...
There's, there's nowhere that says we have to raise salaries any amount for a particular year.
Exactly.
Well, and Mary, the, the challenge comes in too, because when the commissioners' court sets a budget and sets salaries, they have always adopted by position. And so it has to somehow, if they go with this salary survey, that they're going to have to have the assurances from the officials or department heads that if you hire somebody and they are agreeing, that they start at the minimum rate wage. Just because thirty-five is budgeted doesn't mean that's what gets paid out.
Could you mind if I point out just one more thing? I also wanna remind you that we paid for another salary survey and I don't wanna be shot, but it did have some merit to it in that the individual that did do that survey, he did have county experience, he had worked with counties. And I don't know if anybody has looked at it again with a more open mind than what we had when it first came in. I think the issues were more with his recommendations as to where individuals should start within his ladder than they were with what his ladder was necessarily. So, um, I don't know if the new ones, especially you, Judge, and Mr. Reynolds, have seen that old one, but there is some merit to that old one in that he had experience with the, with the, the place within the county that each position holds.
I also want to add to that, although Dr. Worling did do the initial survey, C-K and HR also interviewed several surrounding counties to see what their pays were for the different levels, so county government was taken into consideration in this second survey also.
Didn't they, and this private sector too?
Correct, as did Dr. Worling, yes.
Dr. Worling was the first one, right? Come in. First up, you never even called me, right?
There's lots of problems.
Yeah, he never, that's the reason I didn't agree with her, just he never contacted me about anything.
One thing I liked about, one thing I liked about his survey was that he had the public come in looking for the elected officials and they kind of discussed what the elected officials should, should get, they had a, he had formed a committee of function.
Actually, I believe those were just discussing the employees, not actually the officials.
I think he did the officials too.
Well, I mentioned that to him and he said he didn't.
We don't know what he did.
Well, after he presented the survey...
I was not here.
Right, several questions were asked and part of them were answered, the majority of them were not, and he reflected that they could not get accurate information to thoroughly assess everything, so he just kinda threw up his hands and said, that's what I present him, that's what you get.
You take further? I'll declare this being adjourned, please. No, I don't, I think we have to quit.
Thank y'all for coming.